Good evening. The City Council will convene on Thursday, May 9, 2024, to hold a regular meeting. Public participation to this meeting is provided in person and remotely via Zoom in accordance with Mass. General Law. This meeting is being broadcast by PBD TV. Remote participation can be accessed through the Zoom link on the City website. This meeting is also being recorded by the City Council's stenographer. Please join me in a moment of silence in the Pledge of Allegiance. You heard the motion by Counselor Gould. Any discussion? Seeing none, others in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. The first item on our agenda tonight is hearing 4A, an entertainment license for Brody's Pub at 10 Lowell Street. The acting City Clerk will read the notice.
Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Peabody will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, May 9, 2024, at 7:30 PM in the Frank L. Wigan Auditorium, 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, Mass. And remotely via Zoom on the application for Brody's Pub, 10 Lowell Street, Peabody, Mass. Requesting an entertainment license for the use of non-live entertainment, specifically television and satellite radio, and live entertainment, specifically acoustic live music consisting of one to three people, karaoke, comedy show, and trivia at said 10 Lowell Street, Peabody, Mass. For remote participation using the Zoom platform, please visit www.pbd-ma.gov under Calendar on the homepage, or contact the City Clerk's office. PBD City Council, Counselor Stephanie R. Peach, City Council President.
The applicant, please introduce yourself and tell us what you'd like to do.
Thank you, Madam President. John Kelty, Attorney, 40 Lowell Street, Peabody, Mass, appearing on behalf of Michael Voto, the owner of Brody's. Mr. Voto is here this evening with us, and also Joe Bettencourt, who is our architect. And he's here this evening. As a late add, I presented some renderings that show the first and second floor, the areas of the new building that will be dedicated to Brody's. As you can see, there is a...
Sorry, Attorney Kelty, we're just going to accept that for the record. We're just going to accept your lead.
Madam President, move to receive late communication once, so move.
You heard the motion by Councilman McGinn. Any discussion? Seeing none, others in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Attorney Kelty.
At the outset, I think that the Council can readily see that the submission that's before you this evening, that is as to design of the building, is different from that which was presented last year, we will call it. The building presented when the demolition permit was pulled, the building presented some significant challenges at construction. And the initial permit that we're working under now is a demolition and structural permit, which is allowing the workers to be on-site, make safe, to provide enough shoring up so that we can continue to move forward and build the structure that is depicted on the plans that you just accepted as a late add. There is a... We are utilizing a portion of the property that is being utilized as a staging area. It's public land. We have... We are offering... We've put a temporary fence in there when the building permit is applied for, which we believe will be as soon as Monday, because we are in the process of completing the demolition work and the preparedness, that is, making the structural improvements to hold the structure up. This particular building is four stories. It is 49 feet, six inches, so that it requires no variance. It is permitted under zoning. First two floors will be dedicated completely to Brody's and some office space for Brody's Restaurant. And then the upper two stories are going to be commercial uses, no housing, no requirement for housing permits. I have investigated issues such as the dumpster that is out in the sidewalk. That has been given a permit. That permit is valid until 10... 10-13, 20... 10... October of 10-30, '24. We believe that the dumpster will only be needed for about maybe two weeks, maybe four weeks, but we're hopeful that we'll get rid of the dumpster in two weeks. The dumpster permit has been signed off by the police, Traffic Division, DPS, and the Fire Department. And as I said, that will be in place until 10:30, although the dumpster is probably going to be gone within 30 days. We are proposing in this permit that's before you this evening, we're proposing acoustical live entertainment. We're proposing that we are asking for a permit that would give us the authority to run karaoke and comedy shows or a comedy act in some fashion. We have suggested that music could be acoustical, that we have asked for hours of operation that have gone till 1 PM, because Michael, in preparing the application, just recited the hours that he's open. We understand that there would, in all likelihood, be a limitation on the hours that we can use the premises for live entertainment. Question arose as to where the entertainment would be. This would always be on the second floor. Question arose about windows. And not all the windows are going to be operable. And those windows that are operable can all be facing the street only. However, if the suggestion is made, which I think it will be, that all the windows be closed during any kind of live performance, we're happy to comply with that. We're not operating under the same kind of thought that was presented when the stanzas was presented to the Council. Principally because it's a different atmosphere, the windows are entirely different. They're not what are referred to as garage door windows. I have addressed the dumpster... Oh, one of the things that we'd like to suggest to the Council is that we are adding... We have a temporary fence around the staging area, and we're going to put a fabric in that that'll make it less visible, what is being stored on the property. And I think that makes not only perfect sense for aesthetic reasons, but also to the extent that there will be more material being brought onto the site temporarily to be utilized inside the premises. And we are more than willing to visually screen, and that could be installed within...
Next week?
Next week, the screening mechanism. I think that that would answer... The TV, radio, all of those other TV, radio, electrical, digital music, that's all permitted in the current Brody's. The difference between... Or the former Brody's. The current proposal is to add this component of live entertainment. Happy to answer questions that you may have this evening. The entertainment would also, if you look closely at your plans, in the front right, so that would be the City Hall, on the second floor, there's a round area. That would be the area where any entertainment, karaoke, et cetera, that would be the area that that entertainment would be staged from. And all of the entertainment would always be on the second floor, not the first. We have a full array of elevators, men's and ladies' rooms on the first and second, and handicap on the first and second floor both. Happy to answer questions that the Council may have.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone on Zoom? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? Anyone on Zoom? Seeing none, Councilman McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. I've been in contact with the applicant's attorney, and we have reviewed the revised building layout that you're all seeing here. Sorry, I'm getting a little feedback. This is relatively new information. Thus, the late communication. If anybody has questions about that, I'm not sure Attorney Kelty mentioned it or not, but their architect is here this evening as well and could address those questions, right? Mr. Bettencourt? Attorney Kelty? There is no question. I'm just not... Just mentioning to Councilors that this is new information in terms of this layout, as you've mentioned, and that you also have the architect here this evening, Mr. Bettencourt, if anybody has questions for him. Again, based on what was shared with me, is consistent with what you heard from Attorney Kelty, the general plan is to have occasional live entertainment on the second floor with performers in that circular space identified on the drawings. This would include acoustic music, comedy, karaoke, and trivia. And non-live entertainment would be played most of the time in the background. The proximity to the Rogirio Funeral Home is a concern. Mr. Rogirio is here this evening. I've spoken to him as well. The potential of this being disruptive to grieving families, that definitely needs to be avoided. And accordingly, as you heard from Mr. Kelty, Attorney Kelty, that they have agreed to keep the windows closed during any live entertainment, which I think will go a long way to mitigate that concern. People were very aware of the Brody's backyard when that was in operation. That's currently the area they're using to stage materials now. I just wanted to avoid any confusion. I want to be clear that this application and any license, if it's issued, has nothing to do with that city-owned outdoor space, that all the entertainment we're talking about relative to this license is inside the building. Amplified live entertainment would end Monday through Wednesday at 11:00 PM, and at midnight, Thursday through Saturday. And the applicant's in agreement with those hours, as you heard from Attorney Kelty. I support the application, and at this time, I would defer to other councilors.
There any other councilors? Counselor Welton.
Thank you, Madam President. Attorney Kelty, could you just remind me, the top floors above that, that I think initially was supposed to be office space? Is that still a plan with the space above?
It is office and the opportunity for salon, hair salon.
Okay, but there's no expectation to, you know, put anything from the bar above the second floor, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thanks. No further questions.
Any other councilors? Counselor Manning Martin.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So... I guess I'm not sure if I'm really up to speed. I mean, it was a... Thank you, Councilor. It was a late communication, which I didn't even read yet. It's on the desk. But when I quickly looked at the picture, it doesn't look familiar to me of what we're all aware of. So that's why I didn't object to receiving the late communication, because I wanted to talk about the late communication of the picture, which is four floors. So how did it go from three floors to four floors? Mr. Kelty?
The opportunity presented itself for additional space to be rented out, and so that's in compliance with zoning. There were no approvals that were conditioned upon not taking advantage of zoning and such, that at one time, the space that is to the right, that is kind of next Mex, that looked to be kind of an atrium-looking glass bubble. It turned out that that was a little somewhat unfeasible. And given the astronomical costs in building the structure, we elected to add a second... We elected to add additional floors in compliance with zoning.
Okay, so in a nutshell, then, you could add a floor due to zoning. So you added a floor, so this is the first time anyone's seeing this new...
I think that that's true, as to the public.
That's true. Right, so the public hasn't even seen it yet. So I have a major, major problem with us receiving a late communication, which is a completely different project by adding one floor. It may be all well within your rights to do that, but I'm very uncomfortable with it being presented to us in a late communication right before the meeting. It's the first that we would see of it. And as representatives of the community, the public, they should have had a right to be aware of this, to be able to come speak on it. So I have a real problem with this rolling out this way this evening. So I won't be supporting any vote on this at all tonight. I don't really think it's properly before us. Thank you.
Counselor Rozignol.
Thank you, Madam President. I completely agree with Councilman Manning Martin. What was presented to us when we supported this, and I was very much in favor of Brody's, was three stories. And now that it's a fourth, if... I'll speak for myself. If I knew that that was capable, then I certainly would have asked the City to ask for more money, because you can get more out of potential bidders if you could raise the floor. And the fact that this was just kind of automatically done, I just don't see how we weren't included in at least us understanding that this was going to be occurring. And I know right now, we're only talking about an entertainment license, but the fact that this is now four floors, we're talking about the entertainment license now being on the second floor, which was never part of the original agreement either. So I really don't feel comfortable voting on this this evening, to be perfectly honest with you. That's just my two cents. Thank you.
Counselor Gould.
Thank you, Madam President. This doesn't leave a good taste in my mouth. It doesn't pass the smell test. I don't think it should be before us right now to decide whether we want to have a second-floor karaoke. This is not what we talked about. I think we ought to take this back and see what we can do about making sure all parties are involved.
Counselor Turco.
Thank you. I was just going to say that I agree with everything that's been said so far tonight. You know, you heard me a couple of weeks ago say that, you know, we have a good shot with Peabody Square again, and I'm still excited about it. And I don't, you know, nobody's looking to hold up the new Brody's. I think that this kind of caught us all off guard, and it wasn't... This wasn't at all what was presented to us. So again, I wouldn't be prepared to vote on it tonight. But I do have my question to Counselor Kelty, is who is aware of this besides the Building Department? I think you already pulled permits for the fourth floor, correct?
No.
You haven't pulled any permits?
No. The permits that I suggested, the permits that we do have in hand, demolition and structural make-safe work, we were intending Monday to apply for the building permit per se. With fully architectural, you know, fully developed plans.
Thank you. President Peach, I'd like to retain my right to the floor, but I'll defer to Counselor McGinn to answer that, if you don't mind.
Counselor McGinn.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Through you to Counselor Turco and apparently to Attorney Kelty. I looked at the building permit, that second permit, and it was for framing, and it included fourth-floor framing. So granted, I looked at it quickly, but it did appear to me to be inclusive of the fourth-floor framing plan. So I think Counselor Turco's comment there about the Building Department being aware of it is likely accurate. I'll let the architect respond.
All right, thank you, Counselor Peach. So I was aware of the answer to my question before I asked it. I did look at that permit. It does already address the fourth floor, which the permit was submitted months ago. So I believe the Building Department was aware of this. But more importantly, and this isn't like a "gotcha" moment, did anybody discuss this with the mayor at all, you know? Because I think the mayor had some great input into the presentation that was given to us under RFP and then PNS. And the mayor was here to speak in favor of this. And I would hope that somebody discussed it with at least the mayor's office to let them know. I believe that out of 11 councilors, somebody would have caught wind through the mayor that it was discussed. So I'm not quite sure anybody sat down with the mayor himself to see if this was amenable to everybody.
There was no discussion with the mayor?
Yeah, so with that, I think we need to go back to square one on this. And there has to be a discussion initially with the mayor, who I'm confident will bring this forward to us with his thoughts and the opinions of the City Attorney, or whether this violates the initial RFP that was sent out, PNS, you know? So I think we should ask for the opinion of Attorney Khan. We should ask the mayor to represent the project publicly. This went out on PBD Access Television as a specific project, and it's completely different than was presented. So, you know, I would be in favor of continuing. And again, you know, I hope the best for the new Brody's. I just want to make sure that we do this right and on behalf of the neighborhood. And specifically, Mr. Rogirio is my main concern. You know, having the entertainment on the second floor doesn't allow any shielding of sound. But I understand the willingness to keep the windows closed. You know, enforcement would be difficult on that. And, you know, I would hope we wouldn't have long-term issues, but it could be.
Counselor Melville.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Counselor McGinn, would you be willing to share your conditions? I know, I mean, based on feedback today, did you want to amend that? Or I just, I kind of want to flush out what the actual issues are, and I think knowing the conditions you're going to put forth could be helpful in that way.
Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you to Counselor Melville. The conditions deal with hours, so typical type of thing that we see in entertainment licenses, specific mention of the windows being closed at any time and live entertainment is offered, and the efforts that they make ongoing to prevent noise from becoming disruptive to area residents and abutting businesses. That was what I had, condition-wise. However, in reviewing the plans with Attorney Kelty and, you know, what you're looking at right now essentially, kind of the way the offices and storage areas and kitchen, you know, that's all towards the back of the building. So most of the noise, I don't think, would really project in the direction out that back wall towards the funeral home. You know, I was concerned about the noise projecting out towards the Chestnut Street. But again, as you heard, they're going to have some non-operable windows there, and anything that's operable would remain closed. They also... Attorney Kelty had also mentioned in the conversations I've had with him about the insulation materials in the wall, the foam insulation having a particularly good ability to dampen sound. So that's the dense foam insulation that goes into construction these days is effective in dampening sound. With all that said, you know, I can certainly understand the concerns. As I mentioned in my comments, this was new information to me as well. So I've had literally a couple of days to get a little bit better acquainted with this than all of you have had, so I can understand some of the reaction that you're having to it. So, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Counselor Melville.
Thank you. I guess my question is, if it was three floors, you'd still be asking for an entertainment permit for the first and second floor, correct? Was it always going to be on the first floor? Was that the intention, Attorney Kelty? Or is this expansion based off of... Are we adding the... Is this for... I guess the question is, was the intention always that it was only going to be, when we originally approved the RFP, was it only that all the entertainment, the restaurant and everything was going to be on one floor, and then it's now expanded to the second floor? Is that... Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Daigle.
Thank you, Madam President. Most of my questions now are probably moot, but I'm going to ask them anyway, because moving forward, I think it's something I'd like to keep in mind through you to Attorney Kelty. It sounds like you don't have your permit, so you probably can't answer this. What's your projected opening date? Your projected opening date for the restaurant?
The hopeful date is November.
Okay, thank you.
During the month of November.
And have you received Licensing Board approval for all of these changes and amendments in your floor plan?
Do we... What?
Has the Licensing Board approved these changes in this floor plan?
Oh, no, no, no. If... My next step would be to change the description of the premises to match the building as we see it today, first and second-floor bar. So there needs to be a change in the description of the premises for the Licensing Board. Yes.
Yeah, I think considering the situation, I would be more comfortable approving the entertainment license after Licensing Board approval. If this was just the standard one-first-floor entertainment that we reviewed and agreed upon when we approved the RFP, this would be a no-brainer for me. But now the plans have changed, I'd like to see approval from the Licensing Board before I'm comfortable with approving any of this. Thank you.
Any other councilors? Counselor Rozignol.
Thank you, Madam President. So we're just getting this information that it's now the second floor is the entertainment. The public hasn't even had the opportunity to hear that, and whether they think it's a good idea or not. So I think we're kind of putting the cart before the horse. And I know in our packet, it said second floor going into this meeting, and that struck me as odd, because the original plan was always the first floor was the restaurant, and the top two were going to be commercial space. So then to see that this is... That wasn't a typo, and that is actually what's coming to fruition, I just want to make sure that the public has the chance to understand what's going to be going on. And to Counselor Turco's point, not that I don't want to slow down the process, but this is, to me, a significant change that nobody has had a chance to even kind of wrap their hands around or head around, because we're just receiving this now.
Counselor Manning Martin.
Yes, thank you. And I just wanted to remind people, too, that this building belonged to the public. And we, as representatives, were... Presented something that we spoke on their behalf to sell their building to an RFP. sell their building to an RFP. And now it's coming back to us tonight without even anybody having any idea, certainly us, just one counselor knew. And there's 11 of us, and we represent the people that sold the building that, you know, that we spoke for and made that arrangement and that deal. And they don't know anything about it, and we don't know anything about it. And I don't like this at all. I don't like this one bit.
Any other councilors? Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd move to continue the hearing. So moved.
You heard the motion to continue. Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Thank you.
Can I ask, is that to a date certain, or are we essentially tabling it?
Counselor McGinn.
Yeah, I purposefully did not put a date certain because I think there's a, you know, there was a suggestion made about the possibility of it being vetted to the Licensing Board first, so I wanted to leave it open-ended.
Okay.
And if we
I can do that.
choose to go that route. And I don't have a grasp of what that schedule looks like, so the Licensing Board schedule. So therefore, no date certain.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Kelty. Moving on to hearing 4B, special permit. The acting clerk will read the notice.
Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Peabody, acting as the special permit granting authority, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, May 9, 2024, at 7:30 PM in the Frank L. Wigan Auditorium, 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, Mass., and remotely via Zoom on the application from Andrew Brancato, 301 Newbury Street, number 204, Peabody, Mass., for a special permit requesting to operate a physical therapy clinic at 4 Lake Street, Peabody, Mass., as filed in accordance with Sections 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the Peabody zoning ordinance. For remote participation using the Zoom platform, please visit www.pbma.gov under Calendar on the homepage, or contact the City Clerk's Office. Peabody City Council, Counselor Stephanie R. Peach, City Council President.
Thank you. Will the applicant please approach the podium? Yes. Just introduce yourself and with your address as well for the record, and just let us know what you're applying for.
Hello. My name is Andy Brancato, 301 Newbury Street, Danvers, Mass. I want to open up an office at 4 Lake Street for postural alignment.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this special permit application? Anyone on Zoom? Anyone here to speak in opposition? Anyone on Zoom? Counselor Higgins.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'd just like to mention that I've had a brief, I had a meeting, a phone meeting with applicant Andrew Brancato, and we talked about the business and the location of 4 Lake Street. It's a, it's a great spot. His business is going to be by appointment only, so there'll be no serious impact on the parking situation in that lot. He will have a lot, a couple of spots at least for him and his business. His operating hours are going to be, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe, 10 to 8 Monday through Friday, and no operating hours on the weekend, although he's welcome to do that. The area has plenty of businesses that operate earlier and later than that. So he's well within the operating hours in that area. It's, the impact on the neighborhood would be unnoticed, would be minimal. So it seems like a really good opportunity, and I'm happy that he's choosing to open an office in Peabody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any councilors to speak? Counselor Rozignol.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you to the applicant. Are you a licensed physical therapist?
No, I'm a certified personal trainer. I have a health club at the Inland Sports Club in Danvers at the DoubleTree Hotel. Patrick Mummy came to have a convention with personal trainers to teach this advanced posture, he's a physical therapist, to teach this advanced postural alignment system. It's, it involves lasers, measuring people's 21 points of their bones, putting it into AI software, and that software comes out with six exercises that the people should perform at home. And I could coach them through it, being a physical, I mean, being a personal trainer.
So your clinic can't say the word "physical therapy"? You know that, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Because
It's right on our website. It says, "We're not physical therapists, we're not chiropractors." And this is not my words, but if they were to marry, symmetry would be born, and that's our tagline.
Only because in our packet it says "a physical therapy clinic," so I just want the public to be clear that it's not a physical therapy clinic. It's a specific program from a symmetry alignment technology. So I just, just for clarification, so where did you say you got trained in that?
I trained in New York and California, but he came to the DoubleTree Hotel to have a convention for personal trainers. He was the keynote speaker, and out of maybe a couple hundred people that attended, three of us bought the system. It was about $10,000 to open a standalone thing.
To your knowledge, is there any other symmetry clinics in Massachusetts? I was looking it up, and I know there's one in California. I think there's one in New York. Are there any other of these type of clinics in Massachusetts?
There's one more is going to, she's going to be certified in Nashua, and that's the closest. But yeah, but yeah, New York and California. It's the copies StretchFit. They're all over the place. And when you walk into StretchFit, they have a different form of that technology to align people.
I'll yield to my counterparts. Thank you.
Counselor Gould.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to the applicant, or Counselor Higgins, actually. Is this in the mansion building on Lake Street?
Could you repeat that? I couldn't quite hear the last part.
Sure. Is this number 4 Lake, is that the mansion building?
No.
It's on the right, then it's on the right-hand side?
Would you take a
Take a write-off for room one, and it's right there on the right?
It's the other end of Lake Street.
It's the other end of Lake?
It's at the, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Next door to the Chinese restaurant, Tattoos Parlor.
Thank you.
Counselor Manning Martin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no problem with this. I just had a suggestion that if you can be open on the weekends, that you may want to put that in your permit and then just choose not to be open on the weekend because down the road, if you decide you want to open up on a Saturday, you'd have to come back to us for an amendment. So you might, you know, just a suggestion if you want to be open to that, and if Counselor Higgins is open to that, that's just something to offer you to make it easier for you in the future, you won't have to come back to us.
Thanks, yeah, that'd be great. I don't plan on opening the weekends. I have a health club. It's really busy on the weekends. Birthday parties, we have a swimming pool. This is a kind of a way for myself to retire, sell the club. And I grew up on West Peabody, right down the street, been here my whole life, raised a family on Lake Street, 107 Lake Street. And I just want to just kind of retire and do this as appointment only.
Counselor Rozignol.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you to Counselor Higgins. Just, if this is to move forward, one recommendation I would make is, an order of condition, is that any signage does not say "physical therapy," just because I don't want you in legal trouble, first of all, because technically you can't say that unless you're a licensed physical therapist. And just so that the public knows the technology that you're bringing forward.
That's no problem, and I appreciate that. And it's new to my friends even telling me what I'm doing for work now, why I'm in New York, why I'm in California training.
Counselor Rozignol.
Thank you. Actually, full disclosure, I'm in physical therapy, so that's why I'm asking these kind of, I don't want to say pointed, but understanding the law that you can only practice as a physical therapist if you're licensed.
Counselor Turco.
Thank you, Madam President. I may have missed it, and did we address the property taxes yet, the delinquent property taxes? And I know that's on the building owner, so I'm not saying that's going to affect my vote tonight, but how, do we typically put that as a condition in the permit that the building owner, we just don't address it?
Counselor Turco, speaking for myself and situations I've had in Ward III, we have not held up applicants' permits for it, but I have had discussions with property owners, and I would suggest that Counselor Higgins do the same.
Thank you. I just wasn't sure if we put a condition that approved contingent upon payment of property taxes, but I'll defer. Thank you.
Counselor Higgins.
Just a comment on Counselor Turco's mention there of the taxes. I did contact the collector's office, and I think when the application was first filed, we, they were in, they owed about $9,300, and currently they owe just over $8,000, so they've made some payments since then. The collector's office just wanted it to be noted on the record, and I will take that recommendation to follow up with the property owner.
Any other councilors? Counselor Welton.
Not to belabor the point, I just, I agree with Counselor Rozignol. I think maybe it might be problematic for the business owner long-term if we just don't clean up where it says "physical therapy," because there are regulations and things like that. So maybe if there's a suggested other way references, like a wellness clinic or a physical training or something along those lines, it might be helpful for you in the long run. So I'd just like to suggest that. Thank you.
Any other councilors? Seeing none, I will make the suggestion, Counselor Higgins, in your motion this evening, I would change "physical therapy clinic" to be "a wellness clinic." I think that's an appropriate term, just so our public record doesn't reflect anything misleading. And if there's no other comments, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
You heard the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Higgins.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the special permit application submitted by Andrew Brancato from 301 Newbury Street, number 204, Peabody, Mass., for a special permit requesting to operate a wellness clinic. In Peabody, Mass., as filed in accordance with Sections 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the Peabody zoning ordinance. And I'd like to add the recommendation to make sure that the signage not state "physical therapist" or "physical therapy." So moved.
Thank you. You've heard the motion by Counselor Higgins. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Counselors Turco.
Yes.
Rozignol. Welton.
Yes.
Melville. Gamache.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Daigle. Manning Martin.
Yes.
Higgins. Peach.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all.
Moving on this evening to reports of committee, the Ad Hoc Committee on Aggregate Industries. Counselor Higgins.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. We had a meeting tonight of the Ad Hoc Subcommittee on Aggregate Industries, and we reviewed the 2023 annual report. Counselors Gamache and Rozignol were in attendance, as well as Counselor McGinn, Counselor Gould, Counselor Daigle, and Counselor Peach. We discussed a number of items throughout the meeting. We went over all of the major issues involving the quarry as far as air quality, noise quality, water quality, some of the neighborhood issues that had come up over the 2023 season of blasting, everything. All the departments had reviewed the annual report and found no violations of the special permit. Having said that, I would like to make a motion to the committee as a whole to approve the, or accept the annual report from 2023 from Aggregate Industries with the following recommendations. Recommendation one, the notification letter sent to residents regarding the pre-blast property survey needs to be revised to reflect wording contained in the special permit stating "The independent specialist shall submit a copy of the condition survey for each residence surveyed to the homeowner and the fire department." Recommendation two, Aggregate Industries should conduct additional noise mitigation efforts to ensure that the 10 dB increase above background noise is not exceeded for any location for any period of time. Recommendation three, the typo in Table 5, Location 4, on page 167 of the report, the negative 3 value should be corrected to negative 2. Recommendation four, groundwater sampling from wells should continue to be taken in the springtime period. This will allow wells to have adequate groundwater table to help ensure that a sample can be taken and analyzed. Recommendation five, noise monitoring measurements must be conducted twice a year in the spring and fall while the facility is operating. And recommendation six would just be that all conditions of the special permit issued in 2002 must be met going forward. So moved.
You heard the motion by Counselor Higgins. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Higgins. Can you just make a motion to accept late three, which was accepted during committee?
Good point. I'd like to make a motion to receive late communication three.
You heard the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Does that conclude your report?
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Higgins. Moving on to motions, orders, and resolutions, Counselor Turco.
Thank you very much. Bear with me here, just a bunch of stuff came up all at once. Co-motion with Counsel Welton to refer the discussion of changes to the definitions of trucking terminal and warehouse operation to the ICD Committee and to Community Development Department with the request that the Community Development Director provide new language with clear differences between the two zoning uses. So moved.
You heard the motion by Counselor Turco. Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Turco.
Just a brief explanation on that. You all saw, I hope you all saw, in the Salem news today, the Analogic Building had been approved a couple weeks ago by the Planning Board for four separate buildings, all with tractor-trailer use, allowed use of warehouse space. My fear is that the Office Park is now becoming a truck stop, and I think that it's time that we address the issue, and I'll have a further follow-up motion on that, but I just, you know, I think the last 10 or 15 businesses we've approved up there have all been tractor-trailer uses, and I don't think it's good for the long-term outlook for the park. With that, second motion, motion to refer the issue of zoning within the IP zoning district, specifically Centennial Office Park, to ICD and ask the Community Development Director to appear. Specific changes up for discussion would be limiting warehouse and trucking terminal use, adding restaurant mixed use and grocery store use to the use table, and any other suggestions by councilors.
You heard the motion by Counselor Turco. Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Turco.
Thank you, Madam President. Motion to refer discussion of issues with the Granite Road Mountain Terrace. This is a co-motion, and I apologize, the last one was a co-motion with Counsel Welton also. This is a co-motion with Counsel Welton to refer discussion of issues with the Granite Road Mountain Terrace project from last year to the Public Services Committee and invite the DPS Director to discuss resolutions for the current issues with the project. Thank you.
You heard the motion by Counselor Turco. Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Turco.
And last but not least is a motion to request that the mayor and finance director appear before the council as a whole to discuss the migrant situation as it pertains to the city of Peabody, budget and revenue. And I'd like to put that as counsel of the whole because I don't think it fits into any one specific committee. I could say finance, but there may be other questions regarding the issue that arise, so I'd just like to leave it open for any discussion, and so moved.
You heard the motion by Counselor Turco. Counselor Welton.
Thank you, Madam President. On that motion, Counselor Turco, I think it may be helpful to have the superintendent as well and be able to provide us some sort of data on the impact on schools and what the plan plan might be going forward with some of those, some of those displaced families.
Thank you. That's a great suggestion. I, I will add the superintendent of schools to the motion.
Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all is in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Turco.
Thank you, Madam President. I believe that's it. No further motions.
Thank you. Counselor Rozignol.
Thank you, Madam President. Under suspension of the rules, motion to receive and approve, all papers being in order, junk dealer licenses for 2024 renewal for the Mod House 58 Pulaski Street, Building C, and the Velvet Elvis 99 Lynn Street. So moved.
You heard the motion. Any discussion? Counselor Welton.
Thank you, Madam President. On that motion, in regards to the Velvet Elvis 99 Lynn Street, just like with that, all papers being in order, communication reminding that the hours are to be followed. I know that there's been some neighborhood complaints in terms of not adhering to the hours, and there's been communication to the building inspector, which hasn't been resolved as of yet. So I'm fine with all papers being in order for the junk dealers' licenses to, to remain, but if we could send a, a notice to remind them to adhere to the stated hours, that'd be appreciated.
Counselor Welton, could you make that in the form of a motion after we accept this, when it's, when it's your turn? Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Rozignol.
Thank you, Madam President. Under suspension of the rules, motions, receive item 8B and send that to Legal, as well as the email that we received from Mr. Titlebaum and the correspondence we received from Mr. Belavance regarding the dollar amount. So moved.
Counselor Rozignol, I don't believe the email from the resident is in our packet, with the clerk being on vacation, so...
Where it was sent to all of us, as long as that's sent to Legal.
Yeah. It, it was sent to the entire council. I don't know the rule on that. Does anyone know?
I'm sorry, Counsel Rozignol, could you repeat your, your issue?
That we all received an email from Mr. Titlebaum regarding this issue, so I wanted to, now that we all have had the opportunities to look at it, I just want that to be referred to Legal on this matter.
Thank you. So is your question, Madam Chair, whether it's put into public record?
Yes, that would be my question, because it's not in our packet this evening.
Yes.
But the whole council has received it.
Yes, so I would suggest Counsel Rozignol move to receive it and enter it into record.
So moved.
Okay. So first we'll take 8B, and we'll put that into Legal. That's the motion on the floor. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote. And then Counselor Rozignol will take a motion to receive the email as late number four and refer it to Legal. So moved. Got that? We're testing the clerk tonight. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Rozignol.
And then lastly, the, what was in our packet last meeting, community, it's not in this packet, it was in last packet, but to move that to Legal, because we did not put it in it to a committee, because there was no discussion on that.
Understood. The motion is to move the communication from Community Development that we received at our last meeting into the Legal Affairs Committee. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Rozignol.
No further motions. Thank you, Madam President.
Counselor Welton.
Thank you, Madam President. In reference to the 9A Velvet Elvis junk dealer's license that we discussed, I guess the motion would be with the notice of renewal, if we could affix a copy of the initial conditions that were provided, and separately, I will follow up with the building inspector, because there were some complaints with not adhering to the hours. So that's the motion to, to affix the initial conditions with the renewal. So moved.
You heard the motion. Counselor Manning Martin.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and along the same lines as the last item, we had received communication from a neighbor with complaints, so you may want to receive and enter that into record as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Manning Martin. To that point, if I could receive to public record email communication from a neighbor, should I disclose?
I don't, Counsel Welton, I don't believe that was sent to the entire council.
Oh, it wasn't? Okay.
So if you'd like to forward it to the clerk, we can certainly receive it.
I'll forward it to the clerk. You're, you're right. It was sent to me and you and a few others, so yeah, I'll make sure that that gets sent out to everybody. So I guess the initial amendment would just be currently to, just to fix the initial conditions to the renewal. Separately, I'll, I'll follow up the council, and I'll forward that email along.
All right. The motion is to send communication of existing conditions with the notice of renewal. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Welton.
Thank you, Counsel, excuse me, Counsel President. Item, move to receive item 8A and refer to ICD.
You heard the motion by Counsel Welton. Is there any discussion? Counselor McGinn.
I think it needs to go to the Planning Board as well. Madam President, thank you.
If, if I could amend my motion to receive and send to the Planning Board and ICD. So moved.
Thank you, Counsel Welton and Counselor McGinn. I believe we had this discussion and issue last year on the council where a private application for zoning change needed to be set up as a public hearing and not go to ICD, and that was only for city changes. If we'd like to discuss that comment. Counselor McGinn.
Yeah, I, I think ultimately it does need to be a, a public hearing, but the practice has been to get a recommendation out of industrial and community development. So I guess to, to fully complete the motion, it would be all three of those things, the, the referral to industrial and community development, the referral to the Planning Board, and ultimately to set up a public hearing.
Counselor Gamache.
Yeah. Correct me if I'm wrong, but if it doesn't get reported out of committee, how can you have a public hearing?
That was the issue that we were into last session.
It's not an issue. And we did go through this, and it was determined, now, I'll defer to Counselor McGinn, but I always thought that if it was not approved in committee, we're taking the process away from the petition. Thank you.
Counselor McGinn.
Yeah, I thi- I think we have examples where it just, it does come out with a negative recommendation. I think, I think there are examples of that in the past, but rather than just dying in committee. With that said, I'm not crystal clear, you know, we, sure?
I can ask, ask for you to go on. Yeah. Let me further amend the motion, and regarding 8A, please send this to City Solicitor for a recommendation in terms of procedurally where to, where to send this. So moved.
You heard the motion by Counsel Welton to refer item 8A to the Planning Board, to ICD, and set up a public hearing, as well as ask for input from the City Solicitor on procedure. Counselor McGinn.
I, I don't, I just, it's your motion, Counsel, but maybe leave off the, the public hearing portion of it until we have the, the opinion.
Yeah, thank you, Counsel McGinn. That was my intent, was to replace the initial motion, not, I should have said replace, strike the initial motion, not amend. So I guess the revised motion would be to receive item 8A and send to City Solicitor for further recommendation in terms of where we send it next.
Counselor McGinn.
But we are under a timeframe to send it to the Planning Board, so that, that piece of it has to happen.
Send it to Planning, but we're not going to send it to ICD or set up a public hearing at this point. If that's satisfactory to everybody, that'll be the motion.
Okay. The motion is to send this to Planning and to the City Solicitor for an opinion on procedure. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Welton.
Thank you, Counsel President. I just wanted to, well, actually, I guess first, if I could move to receive Communication 7A regarding North Shore Children's Museum.
You heard the motion by Counsel Welton. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Welton.
Thank you. And just on that, the reason I wanted to receive it is just to kind of explain where this process is, as, as far as I can read it to be. So this is a status report on the 501(c)(3) tax exempt status, not for the Children's Museum itself, but for the Friends of the North Shore Children's Museum, and I just wanted to make that distinction. If you look at page six of the application, 7A, page six, section nine, it says the corporation will only distribute funds to the North Shore Children's Museum, which is a department of the city of PBD. So that still remains. I know the long-term goal is to have these two entities separated, but I, I wanted to clarify that this 501(c)(3) status is for the specific express interest of raising funds to support the North Shore Children's Museum. So it's still a city department, but this allows them to raise funds to, to eventually not have to need funding from the city. So I know it's kind of a little bit nuanced, but I just kind of wanted to provide that explanation, that it's still a city department, it's still going to be in the budget, but this is a 501(c)(3) that's set up to allow for private fundraising.
Counselor Manning Martin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Counsel Welton. On that application, can you find the date that it was applied?
I, I just, I, I can look for it.
Because I've been, I've been looking for that, and I can't find it.
So it's...
I'm just curious.
The...
Since you're, you're kind of an expert on these applications, maybe I thought you'd be able to find it.
I wouldn't say expert, a little bit more familiar with where to look for some of the stuff, but it says on page two, enter the date you formed. It's 5/26/2023, so about a year ago.
Right, but that's when they formed.
Yeah, so...
So I'm, I just want to know when this applicant, the date this application was sent in. And I can't find a date on it.
That I...
Which is, to me, is really strange.
That I can't find, I can tell you this, this generally takes about nine months on the, on the short end sometimes, if, if they didn't have to send it back. I can't speak to when they submitted it, and I just, the only, nobody asked me to provide any background on this or anything, I just, I wanted to make sure that the clarification was made, that it's still a city department. But it looks like... I would back out, you know, nine months or so from, from last May 26, but I can, I can look into this further and find out for you, Counsel Manning Martin, if that's helpful.
I can, I can, I can look into it further. Thank you. I, um, it's just really strange that on the first page of an application, it doesn't have a date that it was, yeah. It's very strange to me, because that's, that's the one piece of information I was looking for, and it's not on here. So I'll find it. Thank you.
It is the IRS, and I think they're pretty well-known for being bureaucratic, but I, I understand that should be something that's in there. But again, I just, I wanted to, sorry, I wanted to just make sure people knew that it's still a city department, that it's, just because it's a 501(c)(3) status doesn't mean that that's changed. This will still be in our budget, and that's all.
Thank you.
No further motions. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Melville.
Thank you, Madam President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive item late two and forward to the Finance Committee. So moved.
You heard the motion by Counselor Melville. Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Melville.
No further motions this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Gamache.
Yes, at this time, I'd ask that we send a communication to the building inspector concerning, and have him issue notice to the owner of the property of 4 Wheatland Street to have this, the building demolished. That was the building that was involved in the fire. It's boarded up. It's, I've been getting complaints from neighbors concerning the deterioration of the structure, odors emanating from the property, rodents, et cetera, and I'd just like to make sure that the building inspector proceeds, is trying to get that building down as soon as possible. So moved.
You heard the motion by Counselor Gamache. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Gamache.
No, no further motions. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 10A and adopt as advertised. So moved.
You heard the motion by Counselor McGinn. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Counselors Turco.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Welton. Melville.
Yes.
Gamache.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Gould. Daigle.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Peach.
Yes.
Motion carries eleven to zero.
Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 10B and adopt as advertised. So moved.
You heard the motion by Counselor McGinn. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Counselors Turco.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Gamache.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Daigle.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Peach.
Yes.
Motion carries eleven to zero.
Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. No further motions.
Counselor Gould.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a co-motion with yourself to have the tree looked at by the Tree Department at 23 Newcastle.